Um, all right, this time, I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council meeting of September 28th, 2020 to order. Uh, Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm calling executive session per RCW 42 dot zero, dot three zero, dot one one zero, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. This session will last no longer than 10 minutes. There will, we will come back into regular session and there will be no action taken All right. At this time, hello? during executive session. So at this time, I ask the council to hit your mute button and then call into the executive At this time, I will bring us back into regular session and no action was taken during executive session. session. And we're going to move on now to item two A, which is announcements and committee reports. And the first thing on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. So as of today, Island Hospital reported four new cases last week. They've tested a total of 5,371 people. We've had a total of 61 positive cases in Anacortes, 10 people who have been hospitalized and zero deaths. Uh, in the county, we were at, well, we were at 1,103, but as of this afternoon, we had eight new cases over the weekend, which brings us to 1,111 cases, 98 people hospitalized and 22 deaths in the county. The state of Washington, right now, we have 86,269 confirmed cases of COVID with 2,100 deaths. Now, the county, right now, we are, the county must have fewer than 25 cases for 100,000 over the past 14 consecutive days. We were pretty close to 24 cases before this weekend's new eight cases. So we're in the 25 to 26 range right now for 100,000. So we're right on that, that goal that we needed to get to, to, um, to be eligible for Phase Three. Uh, number two, the county must, um, have greater than 50 individuals tested for 100 new cases in the prior week, and we are waiting, updating information from the state on that. Number three, the percentage of individuals using positive, testing positive must be less than 2%, and we're currently at 1%. The percentage of beds occupying the county must be less than 80%. We're currently at 74. And lastly, the percentage of beds occupied by COVID-19 must be less than 10%, and we're currently at .5%. So we've met, easily met four of the five metrics. There is an ongoing discussion, even though we're close to meeting the metrics to move to the next phase, the governor has hit a permanent pause at the moment. So we're going to just all anxiously watch and work with them. The mayors today reached out to the commissioners and asked the commissioners in the health department to really be proactive with the county, with the state health department on next steps of getting us to how we can move forward to Phase Three. Uh, the United States now has over 7 million cases and 204,000 deaths, and there have been 310,000 new cases in the last seven days in the United States. And globally, there's been 33 million cases with 999,000 deaths globally from COVID. And that, um, the only other update I have is that we have two days left to fill out your census forms, so if, if people haven't done that, we encourage them to do that. And that is all the briefings I have on COVID and things coming from the county. Now, do you have any questions? All right. So we'll move on now to item two B, our finance committee.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
So Finance Committee met last week, and we talked about Waste Management had came and asked for a tax increase, uh, but we are going to hold them off until next year. Uh, also, they wanted to talk about bi-weekly recycling pickup, and that too, we are going to talk about after the first of the year. Uh, we also talked about the parklets are in, and there has been some demand or request for some more, about four more. So we're looking at possibly using LTAC funds or which funds we're going to use to try to purchase four more of those. And also, we have received some money from the Affordable Housing Tax. We have received a grand total of about $35, so that funds are starting to come in. And originally, the money was supposed to be 55% to the Housing Authority, 45% to the Family Center. And that was based on because the Housing Authority had more projects to do than the Family Center. But right now, the Housing Authority is not ready to move on the Olson Building, so we're looking at changing that percentage for right now to a 50/50 because both, um, agencies are ready to move forward with a single project. So splitting that evenly versus a 55/45, uh, to make it a little bit more even, uh, because the Olson Building is not ready to move in. Uh, and I think that's about it, unless you have anything, Bruce?
Yeah, that covered it great. Thanks.
Okay. So then, um, our library committee.
Uh, Mayor Gear, I would love to report on the library committee. Uh, so Mr. McDougall and I met virtually with Jeff Vogel for the first time as our new library director, and we had a really good, um, overall summary of the inner workings of the library, how it's been going since COVID started, a little bit about, um, the finance, um, and looking at budgeting for the next year. So a couple highlights. Um, you know, most, almost everyone is back working in the library, preparing, um, for curbside pickup, and that has been really successful. Um, they also have a pretty extensive online virtual, um, uh, programming for both kids and adults that Ms. Leslie is doing and, uh, Dana Farnsworth and, um, with the help of the rest of the group. Um, we've actually doubled our electronic use when it comes to, uh, the available online resources since everyone's at home. Um, what other things? It's been very labor intensive to pull, uh, pull books four times a day and then get them out to the curbside for pickup and, and drop off and things like that. We've had, there's about 139 virtual programs that have been posted, and you can find them, I think, on the Facebook web, the Facebook site for the library, but also on our city website, the link to the library. And with 139 virtual programs, there's been over 47,000 views of them, so their, the new creative work that they're doing, um, as a staff has been received very well. Um, they actually got four grants, which I always thought was pretty interesting. Uh, Kiwanis have provided a grant for $5,000 for just collection development, and then there were three state grants. So there was a $1,500 PPE grant that was provided in March. There was a $4,000 grant that will provide 10 hotspots and funding for them. So they're wireless hotspots, and the library is currently working on how they will be checking those out, but they should be available to the citizens shortly for those people that might need to utilize them. And then they also received a $2,800, uh, grant for, uh, camera equipment and computer, so they can continue that kind of a work. Um, the thing that, we talked a little bit about the budget, um, and, and the fact that they're down three people. They know, obviously, there's a hire and freeze, but hopefully keeping those positions, um, on, on the books for now. Then the other thing that I really kind of would like to, wanted to stress was the fact that we've got two groups. Um, there's the foundation, and then there's the Friends of the Library, and they provide an incredible amount of, um, funds to, uh, the library. So the Friends of the Library do about $30,000 to $40,000 budget per year. Um, and then the foundation also does a lot of the bigger programming, um, in addition. Um, so I think that that was really interesting to talk, to listen to, and also the, some of the professional services, such as the consortium eBooks. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McDougall, I might be getting in the weeds now. Um, but the fact is, is that some of those, those foundation monies might be cut short because of the fact that the Friends of the Library, the bookstore, it can't be open currently. So it was just something for us to be aware of, that they really supplement a lot of the services and new books that are provided, um, and some of the periodicals that are provided, um, through their fundraising. So just something for us to be aware of moving forward, and thank you to them for doing so.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. McDougall.
Uh, it's Ms. Moulton. Um, I just have a question for Ms. Cleland McGrath about the virtual programs and the access. Can they also be accessed on the, is there a library YouTube channel?
That's a good question. I don't know if there's a YouTube channel. Mr. McDougall, do you know?
I don't know, no.
I think Mr. Vogel's here.
We could do a quick check.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, we do have a YouTube channel as well, and that, all the programming is located there.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything to add, Mr. McDougall?
No, that was great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDougall. All right, we'll move on then to our fiber committee report.
Mayor Gear?
McDougall.
All right. Last week, we had a fiber committee meeting that, um, well, the, the fiber department presented to council last Monday, so the, the update coming on Thursday afternoon, um, you know, fairly similar information. Uh, we did cover that we're gonna, we're gonna look to, um, bring a fee for customer-caused service calls forward, and, you know, a fee that's going to be something like, um, kind of an hourly rate of some sort for, you know, if, if a customer accidentally cuts the fiber leading to, to their property, or, you know, breaks, breaks something inside the house that is a piece of the installation, or if the customer is asking the fiber department to say, provide tech support for, for their in-house, um, system, like if they've got their own router or something like that, that, that the, uh, fiber department doesn't manage. So that sort of customer-caused service calls fee is going to be coming, uh, to council here probably in a couple weeks. Uh, second item was kind of scheduling for expansion. So, uh, I believe today, an aerial crew began laying the, uh, the backbone fiber for, um, I think it was Area Two, if I remember correctly. Anyway, the, the expansion, you know, we've got those six areas that are aerial utilities, kind of all on the east side of town, passing about 1,300 addresses. So the, the construction has begun today on that. Uh, there's also going to be some rock boring that's going to have to take place in Aerial Five, which is kind of along, close to D Avenue. Um, so that wasn't, that was a bit of a surprise, but, you know, something that, uh, the construction crew is able to handle. Um, the fiber installers are going to be able to follow the, uh, the RBC, um, construction crew, hopefully in a, in a week or two, and just be, begin immediately picking off, uh, customer installations. So, um, in the last few weeks, we've had a little bit of a slowdown in customer installations because they've been the sort of harder-to-reach customers in the existing sort of trial zones. Uh, and we should see some installations picking back up, uh, you know, at a, at a greater rate per week as we, as we get back to doing the fairly simple aerial installations. Um, other key pieces, we have a grant application that the department will be submitting. Um, not sure on like, if, you know, if awarded, what the dollar figure is, but, uh, hopefully it, hopefully a decent dollar figure. Also looking to acquire some IPv4 addresses. So back when, at the beginning of the year, we acquired 1,000 addresses, IPv4 addresses are similar to like, you know, a, a phone number in that it's a, a unique number where, um, a computer is reachable on the internet. And so everybody, all customers need a unique address to be able to, uh, to, to connect to the internet and have traffic go, go back and forth. Unfortunately, the internet itself is actually sort of out of IPv4 addresses. Like, you have to buy them now on the, on the free market, whereas they used to be, it was kind of a numbering system that was allocated sort of essentially for free. Um, there is a new version of IP, just, just a tech detail, but IPv6 addresses, which makes that problem go away. But we're still a little ways away from a full transition, so in the meantime, we get to acquire IPv4 addresses as we get, um, as we get additional customers. So this is actually a good thing because it's a, it's a sign of success. We've got people, uh, we've got customer demand and customers coming online. We added about, I want to say about 20 customers last week, so we're up to 320 total customers when you count, um, business and residential. And in the take rates, we've got 42.4% of the central business district, uh, so that's terrific market share in the CBD. We've got 37.9% in Old Town, so very nearly 38. M Avenue, we're creeping up towards 35%. We're at 33.1. And then across the aerial expansion areas, um, we're, we're roughly about 16% of, of those areas have already signed up. And we see, as the construction crews go through these neighborhoods, we see the signups increase pretty quickly. That's the main stuff of the fiber report.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to item two E, it's our planning committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton.
Hi, thank you. The planning committee met directly before city council this evening. Ms. Cleland McGrath and Mr. Walters and myself met with, um, staff, and we talked about, a little bit about any, um, planning aspects of the Tommy Thompson train project, if that were to, um, continue forward here in Anacortes. And just very general conversation about where would it go, what would it cost in land and parking and construction, someone would need a staff, it, just very broad strokes because it's just been something that's been on everyone's minds lately, and there's been a lot of public support for keeping it in Anacortes. So what would that look like? How could we, how could a train museum be created that would honor the Thompson family wishes and be a realistic endeavor? And those conversations, of course, will be ongoing. Um, we talked about our CDBG funding upcoming, and that will be coming forward with more detail about the next five years of funding and where that will go. We had talked about $100,000 for a roof for the housing authority, and then there's a lot going on there to plan for the next five years. So planning committee will learn more about that, and then so will council. So that's just also very beginning. We talked about Airbnbs. There is some concern among citizens that they are going to lose homes based on Airbnbs being created where they are currently living. Our zoning regulations, Title 19, do not allow overnight accommodations in residential zones. Those are not, simply not permitted. There are some existing non-conforming Airbnbs, but no new ones are allowed, uh, at this time. We talked about the cold weather shelter that we don't have yet, and, um, Mr. Eric Johnson, formerly of the Anacortes City Council, has been very active in, in that, in that subject. And so those conversations are going to continue too because we don't have one and we need one. So Mr. Musimer and Mr. Johnson are working on that, and we'll have more information soon. I think that's it. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Moulton. Is there any additions to that?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
I, I have a, just a couple of questions for the planning committee, if you won't mind. Um, Ms. Moulton, would you elaborate on the staff that was in that committee?
Yes, I will. It was Mr. Musimer, Mr. John Lunsford of the Parks Department, and Mr. Brett Lunsford of the museum.
Okay. And question for you. Um, and as far as, you mentioned something to the effect of looking at the cost and how it's associated with how the city might be able to move forward, given the, I guess, ground swelling of support.
And then the foundation also does a lot of the bigger programming. And in addition, so I think that that was really interesting to talk, to listen to and also the, some of the professional services such as the consortium ebook. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McDougall, I might be getting in the weeds now. But the fact is, is that some of those, those foundation monies might be cut short because of the fact that the Friends of the Library, the bookstore can't be open currently. So it was just something for us to be aware of, that they really supplement a lot of the services and new books that are provided and some of the periodicals that are provided through their fundraising. So just something for us to be aware of moving forward. And thank you to them for doing so.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. McDougal.
Uh, it's Ms. Moulton. I just have a question for Ms. Cleland McGrath about the virtual programs and the access. Can they also be accessed on the, is there a library YouTube channel?
That's a good question. I don't know if there's a YouTube channel. Mr. McDougall, do you know?
I don't know, no.
I think Mr. McDougall's here.
We could do a quick check.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, we do have a YouTube channel as well. And all the programming is located there.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything to add, Mr. McDougall?
No, that was great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McDougal. All right, we'll move on then to our fiber committee report.
Mayor Gear?
McDougall?
All right, last week we had a fiber committee meeting that, well, the fiber department presented to council last Monday, so the update coming on Thursday afternoon, you know, fairly similar information. We did cover that we're gonna, we're gonna look to bring a fee for customer-caused service calls forward and, you know, a fee that's gonna be something like, kind of an hourly rate of some sort for, you know, if a customer accidentally cuts the fiber leading to their property or, you know, breaks, breaks something inside the house that is a piece of the installation. Or if the customer is asking the fiber department to say, provide tech support for, for their in-house system, like if they've got their own router or something like that, that the fiber department doesn't manage. So that sort of customer-caused service calls fee is gonna be coming to council here probably in a couple of weeks. A second item was kind of scheduling for expansion. So I believe today the aerial crew began laying the backbone fiber for, I think it was Area Two, if I remember correctly. Anyway, the, the expansion, you know, we've got those six areas that are aerial utilities, kind of all on the east side of town, passing about thirteen hundred addresses. So the, the construction has begun today on that. There's also gonna be some rock boring that's gonna have to take place in Aerial Five, which is kind of along, close to D Avenue. So that wasn't, that was a bit of a surprise, but, you know, something that the construction crew is able to handle. The fiber installers are gonna be able to follow the RBC construction crew, hopefully in a, in a week or two, and just be, begin immediately picking off customer installations. So in the last few weeks, we've had a little bit of a slowdown in customer installations because they've been the sort of harder-to-reach customers in the existing sort of trial zones. And we should see some installations picking back up, you know, at a, at a greater rate per week as we, as we get back to doing the fairly simple aerial installations. Other key pieces, we have a grant application that the department will be submitting. Not sure on like, if, you know, if awarded, what the dollar figure is, but hopefully, hopefully a decent dollar figure. Also looking to acquire some IPv4 addresses. So back when, at the beginning of the year, we acquired a thousand addresses. IPv4 addresses are similar to like, you know, a phone number in that it's a unique number where a computer is reachable on the internet. And so everybody, all customers need a unique address to be able to, to, to connect to the internet and have traffic go, go back and forth. Unfortunately, the internet itself is actually sort of out of IPv4 addresses. Like, you have to buy them now on the, on the free market, whereas they used to be, it was kind of a numbering system that was allocated sort of essentially for free. There is a new version of IP, just, just a tech detail, but IPv6 addresses, which makes that problem go away. But we're still a little ways away from a full transition. So in the meantime, we get to acquire IPv4 addresses as we get, as we get additional customers. So this is actually a good thing, 'cause it's a, it's a sign of success. We've got people, we've got customer demand and customers coming online. We added about, I wanna say about twenty customers last week, so we're up to three, three hundred and twenty total customers when you count business and residential. And in the take rates, we've got forty-two point four percent of the central business district, so that's terrific market share in the CBD. We've got thirty-seven point nine percent in Old Town, so very nearly thirty-eight. M Avenue, we're creeping up towards thirty-five percent, we're at thirty-three point one. And then across the aerial expansion areas, we're, we're roughly about sixteen percent of, of those areas have already signed up. And we see, as the construction crews go through these neighborhoods, we see the signups increase pretty quickly. That's the main stuff of the fiber report.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to item two E, it's our planning committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Hi, thank you. The planning committee met directly before city council this evening. Ms. Cleland McGrath and Mr. Walters and myself met with staff and we talked about, a little bit about any planning aspects of the Tommy Thompson train project, if that were to continue forward here in Anacortes. And just very general conversation about where would it go, what would it cost in land and parking and construction, someone would need a staff, it, just very broad strokes, because it's just been something that's been on everyone's minds lately and there's been a lot of public support for keeping it in Anacortes. So what would that look like? How could we, how could a train museum be created that would honor the Thompson family wishes and be a realistic endeavor? And those conversations, of course, will be ongoing. We talked about our CDBG funding upcoming and that will be coming forward with more detail about the next five years of funding and where that will go. We had talked about a hundred thousand dollars for a roof for the housing authority and then there's a lot going on there to plan for the next five years. So planning committee will learn more about that and then so will council. So that's just also very beginning. We talked about Airbnbs. There is some concern among citizens that they are going to lose homes based on Airbnbs being created where they are currently living. Our zoning regulations, Title 19, do not allow overnight accommodations in residential zones. Those are not, simply not permitted. There are some existing non-conforming Airbnbs, but no new ones are allowed at this time. We talked about the cold weather shelter that we don't have yet and Mr. Eric Johnson, formerly of the Anacortes City Council, has been very active in, in that, in that subject. And so those conversations are going to continue too, because we don't have one and we need one. So Mr. Musimer and Mr. Johnson are working on that and we'll have more information soon. I think that's it. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Moulton. Is there any additions to that?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
I, I have a, just a couple of questions for the planning committee, if you won't mind. Ms. Moulton, would you elaborate on the staff that was in that committee?
Yes, I will. It was Mr. Musimer, Mr. John Lunsford of the Parks Department and Mr. Brett Lunsford of the museum.
Okay. And question for you. In, as far as, you mentioned something to the effect of looking at the cost and how it's associated with how the city might be able to move forward, given the, I guess, ground swelling of support for that. Is it possible, I guess what I'm looking at is all of the suggestions, I think that it would be beneficial if the council as itself and all seven members would be able to participate in those discussions, because I think where we error, if you would, is that we, we need to have a public discussion and really to be able to understand what the local committees have planned for, whether any of the routes that are being considered by the planning committee is actually in their plans or suggested plans for moving forward and honoring, if they can, the Tommy Thompson memory, as well as the families, you know, need to just sort of have this settled. I guess my concern about it having a closed discussion is that within the staff, we've already had three discussions on, uh, before council about the train. And in each of those three discussions, there was a new presentation brought forward. And in each of those three discussions, we were urgently trying to move forward an issue that obviously, because it's not on the agenda tonight, we decided that it needs, it was decided that it needed to rest and then come back to it. What I'm saying is, I think that the, the discussion of what that could look like should be broader than just the members at the table. My concern is that with it being within the planning committee without the additional thought of the other committee members or the local people wanting to suggest alternatives, what we come away with is really a guesstimate of what that's going to be like, and I don't find that to be as accurate. And, and again, on issues like this, my concern is that in the planning committees' look at where things might go, we have to be very careful that we don't make an assumption that's not true. And so, you know, I'm pretty much very concerned about this process. I think that we need to include the very groups that we are discussing, because if Mr. Lunsford, as well as others, have brought forward plans or their thoughts, which have been communicated to council before.
Good night. Okay.
Just one moment, just, just one moment. And if that is the case, then I think we also need to have someone at the table from the local groups, such that we can have those conversations.
Carolyn, before you speak, can I address him for a moment? Anthony, I assure you, this whole thing will come before the council as a whole. It will be an open conversation for everyone, the public, the council. You know, I, I don't think the planning committee by any means meant to circumvent the public council meeting and full public participation and vetting of all, everything. So I just, I really, we're gonna bring that forward and that was-
Okay. And I appreciate that, Mary, and I appreciate you actually making that statement, because it's important, from the standpoint that we've rushed it to council three times, and each of the three times, we decided that in each, it would come up another time. And the last time we had this discussion, it was as if we were going to make a decision that night. And so then, everything was building up for this meeting on the twenty-eighth, and then just before Wednesday, it was taken off. So my concern with that is that in the committee, I wanna make sure that the planning committee does not usurp its authority to counsel. Not, I'm just saying it from the standpoint that if the planning commission is authorized by the revised Code of Washington to give information to council for councils to make a decision, if in some of these cases, we need an additional thought on it, then I think, then we refer it to that committee. I'm just concerned that this committee needs to make sure that it informs council as a whole what it's thinking. And so we can have that discussion, because I don't feel I'm getting the, I'm only getting the five thousand foot level discussion when I need it at ground level, just as they're-
I get it. Maybe that's my, my-
Contingent with this type of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Moulton, did you have additional comment?
I did, thank you. I would like to share with Mr. Young that basically we did talk at the five thousand foot level. We're not making any kind of detailed plans at all. I shared with you what we talked about. And as we know, this is going to be a fully-vetted public process, which is why it is not on the agenda tonight and has been pushed back for further consideration. So with all that in mind, it was the most general of conversations and we were not making any concrete plans or any decisions of any kind. My interest is, is learning as much information I, as I can of the history from 2012 on up, even prior to that. And so some of that stuff is what we have, what we, I have been reviewing. So that is ongoing and we are not making any decisions behind-
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton, let me just respond to Ms. Moulton. I really appreciate that and I thank you. I know that's exactly what you guys are doing. Sometimes I think it's important that we come to council and we say that, because there are things that are missing. So thank you guys for your work. Thank you for looking at these deep issues as such and recognizing that it needs also to come to the rest of the members of council.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. McDougall, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, as Mayor procs him, I'd like to remind Mr. Young that the formation of the committees, it is impossible to usurp the authority of the city council, because the committees themselves are no more than three members of council. So please, in the future, remember that the committees are not able to usurp the council as a whole. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Gear? And my point to Mr. McDougall is that in the other committees, they do not, they are not authorized by the revised Code of Washington to present facts or findings to council. They're not. And in this case, my concern is that when the planning commission submits information to council, if there's a need for further investigation, I agree, it should go to the planning committee. But if this process is usurped and we are not fully vetted on the process of what's taking place, the discussions or even the trepidations of what the questions are, we're not fully being vetted. So my question is not about the committee. My question is, is to reinforce the importance of the planning commission and its role that it has to council.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, everyone.
Can I say one thing to that? I, I think we need to be really clear that, you know, each committee looks at a specific subject matter for council and we can do a deep dive. When, you know, when we have our museum committee, we kind of assess an issue in a certain manner. When Public Works looks at an issue, they assess it through that lens of Public Works. From being at the, at the planning commission, or the planning meeting, committee meeting this afternoon, the reason we had John and Brett Lunsford, the Lunsford brothers there, is because one is the Parks Director and the other is the Museum Director. And we, as a committee for the, as a planning committee, were trying to kind of factor in those other directors through the lens of planning. So if we're, so one of the things I came up with, you know, the train is currently on Parks Department, under the Parks Department purview where it's located. So that helped kind of lend some information so we could gather through the lens of planning commi, of the planning committee. In addition, you know, the, the contact person has been for the museum, right? So we asked him to come so he could give us the lens through the, of what the museum information is through the lens of the planning committee. And that was really all that was discussed. We did not discuss or strategize anything beyond that. It was really just a gathering of facts, discussion.
Ms. Cleland McGrath, I thank you and I appreciate that. My caution again is I wanna make sure that the whole committee decides. And even in that, if there are questions I have, I would love to be able to say, hey, I have these additional questions, would you as a committee further deep dive into that? And the only difference between this committee and the other committees is that this committee is predecessor, is the planning commission. And that is a legal entity that's responsible for reporting to council. I just wanna make sure we don't run awry of that. I trust that you guys are doing a killer job. I know you are. But I wanna make sure that we're very clear on this process.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, I like discussing the rules and procedures of council meetings as much as anyone. However, I would like to call for a point of order at this point, because it does require two council members to put something on the agenda. And this topic, whatever this topic is, is not actually on the agenda right now. And maybe it's worthy of an agenda item so that we could have a discussion about the rules of committees and those kinds of things. But since it's not on the agenda and we're at six forty and haven't gotten the consent agenda yet, I'd ask for a ruling from the chair that this is out of order and that we proceed to the next agenda item. And I'd just like to correct the record that the planning committee has no relation in the RCW or anything else to the planning commission. Those are independent bodies and, and aren't actually related.
Okay. At this time, I will say that the conversation was out of order and we will move to the consent agenda. So a consent, oh, to public comm, excuse me. We'll move to public comment and I see that there are no attendees tonight. So we will move on then to, from item three to item four, which is our consent agenda, items four A through C.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
I move to approve consent agenda, items A through C. Second?
A motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion signed. Motion carries. So now we'll move on to item five under other business. This is five A, ordinance thirty seventy-six, extending the ordinance thirty fifty-four and interim ordinance declaring an emergency and adopting moratorium on the acceptance of certain land use applications in the R four zone. This is a discussion item.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Swetner, yes. Who, who spoke? Who, which council person?
I'll take it.
Oh, Mr. Musimer. Mr. Musimer and Ms. Swetner are here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I yield to Mr. Musimer.
Right.
Thank you, Dorsey. So first of all, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Tonight is the first look at ordinance thirty seventy-six, which is an interim ordinance extending ordinance thirty fifty-four, ordinance thirty sixty-nine, a moratorium on the acceptance of certain land use permits, including building permits, applications in the R four use zone west of Commercial Avenue, that would propose to use the bonus heights provisions of AMC nineteen point four two point zero five zero C. The current moratorium under thirty sixty-nine expires October twenty-first, twenty twenty, and staff have been unable to meet the work plan schedule due to the current pandemic. So we've already had a couple of workshops in-person in the council chambers, and then, of course, the pandemic put upon us and now we are doing everything virtually. And so we're now recommending a six-month extension, which would extend this out to April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. That will give staff some time to potentially conduct some virtual workshops, although given the amount of concern that we've seen from the community, I, I'm not sure. I think it might be best to keep working this until we can actually have in-person meetings in the council chambers. There is, as you know, council members, a lot of concern in regard to this bonus height provision. So tonight is just the first look at it. Staff have already posted it in the papers and on our websites. And the public hearing will be, will be held on October twelfth with available public comment. With that, I know it was rather short, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Mayor Gear?
Walters and then Mr., is it Mr. McDougall?
Miller.
Miller, okay. Mr. Walters, Mr. Miller. Walters? No, Mr. Miller.
Uh, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll go, since Mr. Walters might have forgot the mute button right away.
Correct, Mr. Miller.
Okay. So my only question is probably the same one I asked last time. I, I think it's fine to do the extension, but was there any, was there anybody who had an application in that's impacted by this? And I, I thought you gave me that number, or it was either zero or one, but I don't recall.
Oh, thank you for the question, Mr. Miller. There are no applications that have been submitted. We have the one that was in play. I'd hope, I'd also like to mention that under section three, there's a typo that I missed and that should read R fours in the west of Commercial Avenue instead of O Avenue. And we'll have that fixed before the twelfth.
Right. Well, that was my only question, was the, you know, the impact if, if somebody who was developing something had come in during this time of the moratorium. So the answer is zero. Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters, go ahead.
Uh, so yeah, I also support adoption of the ordinance and extension of the moratorium. But I don't think I support holding off on doing work on this subject until the conclusion of the pandemic. Because all indications are that could be quite some time. And even when maybe we feel comfortable coming back to work in council chambers, others might not. And beyond that, it seems to me that we'll probably want to engage in a discussion as the pandemic wraps up, you know, in six, twelve, or eighteen months, about maybe permanently changing procedures to allow people to participate via video from wherever they are, even when we can resume in-person meetings. And it also seems to me that the pandemic has created, and winter will as well, the need for housing. And the first housing that people get into before they get to homelessness is crowded housing, which is not good during the pandemic. So it seems to me that we need to continue our work to improve the availability of housing in Anacortes. So I support the ordinance as it's written, but I don't support a timeline that would just push this continuously out until we resolve the pandemic. I think that the next step for us ought to be generation of some concrete proposals for how to resolve it, because we did have meetings where we came up with a bunch of ideas, threw several of them up against the wall. Not all of them were good, as it turns out, but some of them may have merit. And maybe if we can build those out and describe how they would function on the ground, we could have some good conversations with people over Zoom or via email or some other electronic interface. So I'd be supportive mostly of that.
I'm mayor.
Yes, Ms. Swetner.
Uh, maybe it would be helpful, the public hearing is gonna be on October twelfth. Staff would be happy to do an updated timeline for the work plan and present that to council that, that could kind of address that timing for those discussions.
Okay. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Walters, in your thinking?
I think that'd be great.
Yes.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Uh, well, it just, I'd like to, you know, support what Mr. Walter said about throwing some of those ide, in addition to the timeline, which sounds great, but even publishing some of the, some of the possible solutions so that can generate the, the public input before we have any kind of public meeting, whether it be Zoom or eventually in-person. You know, not waiting till the six months and then say, okay, here's, here's some of our ideas for the solution. Let's, let's get those out to the, to the public, at least as a council, we can discuss those and, and get them out to the public for feedback.
Additional comments? Yes, Mr. Young, was that Mr. Young?
Yes, this question is, is directed to Mr. Musimer. Mr. Musimer, given part of this kind of, the genesis for review was the Madrona project, is that project still moving forward, just out of curiosity?
A good question, Mr. Young. Uh, yes, it is.
Any other comments? Right, so we'll bring this back October twelfth with a timeline and we'll address all the comments of the council at that time in that document. All right, at this time then, I'm gonna move on to item five B, which is open for public comment. It's resolution- It's resolution thirty zero two, authorizing acceptance of restricted donation to the city of Anacortes from the Skagit Community Foundation. This is an action item. Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. I'm quite excited about this, actually. So we have been offered a donation from the Skagit Community Foundation and an anonymous donor. So essentially, anonymous donor put in fifty thousand dollars and the Bezos Foundation matched that with another fifty thousand dollars. And the Skagit Community Foundation worked with us to come up with a program very much like the one that we started with the HUD grant.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
Apologies, council, Mr. Meesmer, we are back online and good to go.
Okay, go back a paragraph or two, John, and repeat that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. So just to reiterate, there, this is a donation and a match by the Bezos Foundation. There's a one percent administration fee by the Skagit Community Foundation, so that will leave us with ninety-nine thousand dollars to distribute to small businesses with a maximum of thirty employees. And as I mentioned, right now, we already have fourteen applications that will be taken before the committee, which essentially, like I say, is the same committee that reviewed the HUD grant applications. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mayor Geer.
Okay.
So it, it's, because it doesn't lay out what the restrict, what, what the restrictions are, but essentially, you're telling me it's going to be the same, same type of restrictions as the HUD, the HUD fund that we just went through, using the same committee, same, all the same? Are there any, anything different?
There is a, a little bit different, sir, Mr. Miller. Thank you for asking. This actually will have much fewer restrictions.
Okay, great.
Uh, this one will be, this one, the businesses will need to show what their need is and how it's going to help their business. You don't have.
Sounds like it'll be easier to administer then, from, from the committees.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Meesmer? So it's open to public comment, but we have no attendees tonight, so I will move on that and look for further discussion or.
Mayor Geer.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I move to adopt resolution thirty oh two, authorizing acceptance of the cash donation from the Skagit Community Foundation.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Cleland?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath, to approve resolution thirty zero two, authorizing acceptance of a restricted donation to the city of Anacortes from the, from the Skagit Community Foundation in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I will adjourn the meeting and I thank each of you for being here tonight and representing the city of Anacortes. See y'all really soon. Bye-bye.